I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Counselor Andrew Brandt.
Yes, Mr. Bauerhead. Heavenly Father, with every season comes a change in the community, our needs, and as now as our children start back to school, we can ask to watch over them and the people that are out. Make sure they get to school and home safe. We also thank you, Lord, for your love, your mercy, and your son Jesus Christ. In his name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Ms. Lewis, could I have a roll call, please?
Green.
Here.
Papric.
Here.
Gibson.
Here.
Fox.
Here.
Allen.
Here.
Swisher. Brandt.
Here.
Simmons.
Here.
Everybody had a chance to look at their agenda. I need a motion and a second to adopt the agenda.
I move to adopt the agenda.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Approve or correct regular session minutes of August 5th, 2025? Everybody had a chance to look at that. I need a motion and a second.
Make a motion, make a list.
Second, Gibson. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And opposed? Moving on down to public hearing. Do your comments or concerns regarding the 2025 and 2026 tax levy? I need a motion and a second to open the public hearing.
I move to open the public hearing.
Second, Simmons.
Ms. Lewis, may I have a roll call, please?
Gibson.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Swisher. Brandt.
Yes.
Simmons.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Papric.
Yes.
Public hearing is open. The purpose of the public hearing is to give the citizens the opportunity to be heard on property tax rates proposals to be set by the city council of the city in Marshall, Missouri. It is open if there's any comments or concerns regarding the 2025-2026 tax levy. Is there any? Same none? Need to ask for a motion and a second to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close? Second, Brandon.
Ms. Lewis, may I have a roll call, please?
Fox.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Swisher. Brandt.
Yes.
Simmons.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Papric.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
Committee reports. Up first, we have property finance, budget, and audit committees. That is council members Papric and Fox.
Okay. As of July 31st, revenues are at fifteen million, two hundred and sixty-three thousand, which is about a hundred and fourteen percent of the budgeted amount. Expenditures are at fourteen million, eight hundred and thirty-three million, which is a hundred and four point three-two percent of the budgeted amount. The budget is in its final stage of completion. Will be available for its first reading on September 2nd, with the second reading to pass on September 16th. Amy is hoping to have the final meeting of the 2025 fiscal year on Monday, September 29th, or Tuesday, September 30th at noon. The budget amendment and final bills would be approved at this meeting so that we get as close to possible, or as close as possible, to the last day of the month. That is all.
Ms. Lewis, can I have a roll call, please? Mr. Fox, do you have anything?
Not, no. Except that she wanted to have that meeting at like noon, and we need to have it quorum, so.
To add on to that, there's a piece of paper here coming down.
Okay.
Right on which day you're most available. And then Julie will know when to schedule that at noon.
Is that for everybody or just you?
Yeah, if you can, if you have a preference.
Which right, yeah, either no preference or which one is more of a preference.
Thanks.
Ms. Lewis, may I have a roll call, please?
Gibson.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Swisher. Brandt.
Yes.
Simmons.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Papric.
Yes.
Public hearing is open. The purpose of the public hearing is to give the citizens the opportunity to be heard on property tax rates proposals to be set by the city council of the city in Marshall, Missouri. It is open if there's any comments or concerns regarding the 2025-2026 tax levy. Is there any? Same none? Need to ask for a motion and a second to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close? Second, Brandon.
Ms. Lewis, may I have a roll call, please?
Fox.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Swisher. Brandt.
Yes.
Simmons.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Papric.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
Committee reports. Up first, we have property finance, budget, and audit committees. That is council members Papric and Fox.
Okay. As of July 31st, revenues are at fifteen million, two hundred and sixty-three thousand, which is about a hundred and fourteen percent of the budgeted amount. Expenditures are at fourteen million, eight hundred and thirty-three million, which is a hundred and four point three-two percent of the budgeted amount. The budget is in its final stage of completion. Will be available for its first reading on September 2nd, with the second reading to pass on September 16th. Amy is hoping to have the final meeting of the 2025 fiscal year on Monday, September 29th, or Tuesday, September 30th at noon. The budget amendment and final bills would be approved at this meeting so that we get as close to possible, or as close as possible, to the last day of the month. That is all.
Ms. Lewis, can I have a roll call, please? Mr. Fox, do you have anything?
Not, no. Except that she wanted to have that meeting at like noon, and we need to have a call, so.
To add on to that, there's a piece of paper here coming down.
Okay.
Right on which day you're most available. And then Julie will know when to schedule that at noon.
Is that for everybody or just you?
Yeah, if you can, if you have a preference.
Which right, yeah, either no preference or which one is more of a preference.
Thanks.
Ms. Lewis, may I have a roll call, please? Community Development and Code Committee, council members Allen and Simmons. No report?
Well, I have to report, we had billions permits, there was twenty-three billion permits for a total of two million, three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars. And we fell short collecting four thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars. We're gonna have to do something about our permits status for we collect more money. Get it off, or we're gonna be in the hole there. That's my opinion on that.
Thank you, council members Allen and Simmons. Public Assembly, Council, City Committee, council members Swisher and Gibson.
Yes, I have the Marshall Police Department report for the month of July. There was two hundred and five traffic stops with thirty-one citations, two arrests, and five DWIs. Warrants issued from the municipal court, twenty-four. Officer calls of service, eighteen hundred and fifty-eight. An average of fifty-nine calls a day of the month of June. Police reports taken, a hundred and nineteen. Average of four police reports a day, twenty-five arrests. Animal shelter numbers from July is five citations, fourteen dogs and puppies picked up, zero cats, eight dogs returned to the owners, one dog adopted, and number of cats adopted, two. Nuisance, ten open nuisance cases, three signs are out, forty-three closed nuisance cases, nine summons issued to people, fourteen tickets issued, sixty-five compliance since May 21, 2025. And that is it. Thank you.
Ms. Lewis, can I have a roll call, please? Municipal Service and Personnel Committee, council members Brandt and Green.
We just have fuel sales today, or do you have something else to talk about?
Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, I'll do the fuel sales if you have something. I was just looking back, I don't, a couple meetings ago, I had mentioned that Randy and Jill and I had talked about being more aggressive on our fuel sales prices, and it seems to be working compared to last year. We sold about a thousand more dollars of J D A in July compared to last year. And we're almost two thousand dollars more year to year, year over year, in J D A. So, really good there for the low lead, a hundred, low lead. We are, well, we sold a lot more. We sold about twelve hundred dollars more in low lead in the month of July, and we're about a thousand dollars over year over year. So, I think people are seeing those prices when they fly and on the maps for flying. It does, you can put up fuel prices if we post them. And so, I think some of that was from Oshkosh. People flying across here, and they see our prices are cheapest, and they stop in and buy fuel, so. Yeah. Other than that, I was just gonna ask Randy, I think we're coming to a close on our ag season. How'd that go out there?
Not too bad.
Not bad?
Pretty, we, we have a few different.
Okay. Very good. Okay.
Yes, this is one more comment. The slurry program, Dr. Randy, they, looks like they got about a week left on that. If, you know, they get along and do it at a good rate. It's been running a little later than we anticipated. We definitely like to get our street program done before school starts. We did get the, the, uh, yellow overlay done in good time, but this is running just a little bit behind. But bear with us, and we'll get, we'll get that done. Oh, okay.
Thank you, council members Brandt and Green. City administration, Mr. Brandt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a couple of items of interest specifically followed from our last meeting. You all had asked during. And then this, in this particular case, for example, Osage is only being used as a ninety-foot baseball field right now. That's the only thing that can be played there. No other age group can play, softball cannot play, adults cannot play on that field. So, the thought is, turning it into a turf field allows you to play any age group there. You can do any sport, whether it be football, whether it be flag football, soccer, you know, all these different things can be utilized on that field. As far as a liability goes, there's really not a liability that I'm aware of that really, you know, I know a lot of your major sports teams at the professional level are wanting to go back to, you know, more of a natural surface. However, most of your college programs and even your little league programs across the country are all going this synthetic turf route. Just a comment, well, two comments. Number one, after having talked with Amy, J D, and Preston, I'm completely comfortable with the financial thing. I mean, it sounds like even if you didn't get any new revenue at all, you'd still have the money in your budget to pay this. Just, but a comment, and this is more entirely a park board or a park administration decision, but I'd like whatever agreement you work out with Valley to be clear and publicized. And what I mean is, not just the finances, but, you know, if they have the tennis courts for twenty hours a week, you know, what are those twenty hours? Just for example, you know, when do they need to make at least a couple of courts available for the public? You know, when can the public use this new turf field? You know, when does Valley have it reserved? I, just a suggestion to make that very clear and publicized.
Okay.
Yeah, are you, is, are you following the master plan? Is this following the master plan that you all had, what, December 2022? It seemed to be kind of off the radar a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, this wasn't on the original master plan as far as that goes.
I mean, there was a lot of other things that the community put that was, or above this.
And there are other things that, this isn't, and this by all means is not gonna stop us from doing any of the other improvements such as shelter improvement or, you know, sidewalks, things like that. This isn't really gonna change that. This is gonna be a complete extra part to enhance what's going on at the park and in Marshall itself.
Your master plan, as far as raising funds, had a lot of suggestions or things that you've done in the past, but none of it included borrowing money. So, I'm just, I'm not saying it's outside the possibility, but when they made the master plan, it was not in there.
Do you know, you may not know the answer to this, but last year or two years ago, Mayor, you might remember, Dan, some of you were up here, with that deal with Valley and, what was that? Is that Watermill? What is that out there? Gary, yeah, okay. They were supposedly gonna build real fast and get going, had a big plan, and that's not happened. But if that's gonna happen in the next, you know, I'm sure you're amortizing this loan over twenty, twenty-five years. And if that happens in the next five and you lose that revenue, because they got their own fields, has anybody looked at that and what that does to your pro forma?
It'll still, it won't affect as far as us being able to make the payment and doing that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just hearing a lot about how we don't need any more revenue to pay for this, but Valley's gonna be giving us some money. And we're still gonna be able to do the master plan. This seems like there's a lot of money rolling around out there, and if we've had all that money, like, things could be getting done. So, it's just not making a lot of common sense to me. But I'm not saying I'm against it for the community, I'm just saying there's a lot of questions, I think, still. But definitely, I piggyback up on what he said about posting, because I know, you know, citizens have belabored the point of, well, we tried to go out there and Valley told us no, they were on it or whatever. So, having clear-cut times, I think, is very important. And whoever's gonna mitigate that, if Valley won't get off and there's a schedule, who do they call? You know, just stuff like that. I mean, it's, we're putting up citizens' property and tax property to get this done. I think there needs to be pretty, pretty clear-cut lines of engagement, so.
Anyone else got any questions? Okay. I need a motion and a second. Is that ready?
I move to approve the resolution.
A second.
Ms. Lewis, may I have a roll call, please?
Swisher. Brandt.
Yes.
Simmons.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Papric.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Moving on to ordinances. Ms. Lewis, would you give the first reading by tile along, please?
An ordinance providing for the levying of taxes on all taxable property subject to taxation in the city of Marshall, Missouri for the year 2025.
I need a motion and a second to take it to a second reading?
I make a motion, we'll take it to a second reading?
Second, Papric.
May I have a roll call, please?
Brandt.
Yes.
Simmons.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Papric.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Swisher.
Ms. Lewis, can I have a second reading by tile along, please?
An ordinance providing for the levying of taxes on all taxable property subject to taxation in the city of Marshall, Missouri for the year 2025.
I need a motion and a second to approve?
I move to approve.
Second, Green.
May I have a roll call?
Simmons.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Papric.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Swisher. Brandt.
Yes.
Ordinance number two, this is tabled on May 6th, 2025. Ms. Lewis, could you?
A motion will need to be made to bring it from the table as it was tabled.
Could I have a motion to, a motion and a second to take it, the ordinance from the table?
I make a motion, we'll take the ordinance from the table?
Second, Gibson.
May I have a roll call, please?
Green.
This is just to take it from the table?
Correct.
Uh, yes.
Papric.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Swisher. Brandt.
Yes.
Simmons.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis, could you give the first reading by tile along, please?
An ordinance of the city of Marshall, Missouri amending Section 500-290 and Section 500-320 of the Code of Ordnances to establish testing requirements for applicants seeking a master plumber's license.
J D, would you like to speak on this?
Yes, we have a representative here from the Plumbing Board, Grant, if you're willing to address the council. Thank you.
So, basically, all this, all this is, is previously the only master plumber's license that the city would recognize as one tested for and issued by the city. Basically, all this does, it says if you can prove that, show proof of a master plumber's license issued by the state or proof that you'd passed the ICC code for master plumbers, that we would recognize that too.
So, a plumber would still have the option to take a city test?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's just for master plumbers?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Do we have that many master plumbers want to take this test?
Um, not many that want to. There's a lot, we have a lot in town. Uh, we have a lot that, they come for jobs, big jobs out of town that, like contract situations, that they have to either work under a master plumber here in Marshall or take the test themselves.
So, you don't recognize the master plumber from a different town or different?
Currently, no.
So, it's the state or what was the other thing you said?
Or the ICC, which is the International Code of Council's master plumber's test. It's which, that's a test we issue now.
Okay.
We just wouldn't have to take it through us.
So, prior, a master plumber would have to work under a master plumber that's taking it here?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
That seems like a really good idea.
Anybody else got any questions for that?
I have no question.
Mayor, if I can just add, I just wanna thank the Plumbing Board and Grant specifically for helping us with this issue. This, this lack of reciprocity on the license has been a problem for some time that the department and the city has wanted to correct, and they've helped us, helped bring us to this point tonight. So, we appreciate their input.
Thank you, Grant. Thank you, Mr. Sherman. I need a motion and a second to approve the first reading?
Make a motion, we approve?
Second, Allen.
May I have a roll call, please?
Papric.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Swisher. Brandt.
Yes.
Simmons.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Appropriation. Ms. Lewis, could you give the first reading by tile along?
An ordinance making the appropriation for the payment of accounts out of the different city funds.
I need a motion and a second to take this to a second reading?
Still moved.
Second.
Ms. Lewis, may I have a roll call, please?
Gibson.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Swisher. Brandt.
Yes.
Simmons.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Papric.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis, could you give the second ordinance by tile along?
An ordinance making the appropriation for the payment of accounts out of the different city funds.
I need a motion and a second to approve?
Motion to approve, Green.
Second, Brandt.
May I have a roll call?
Fox.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Swisher. Brandt.
Yes.
Simmons.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Papric.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
That is, Tom, is there any other council business that we need to discuss?
Yes, sir. I, I had a text message the other day saying there's nothing to do, our kids have nothing to do in this city in Washington. That's what they say. So, I said I'd bring it to the city council to see if we can do anything with that. So, I want to bring it to discuss with the city council, see if there's anything we can do, see if we can alleviate some of this problem for the citizens of Marshall.
Yeah.
True, what you got?
Well, we crack a fire hydrant, let it run under it.
See Jeff or Jeff.
There you go, Grant. Probably a little bit of liability involved in that, but, no, I mean, we, you know, they've got the pool in the park, obviously, but, you know, I would like to see, it's just, it's just tough, right? I mean, we've, I've lived here thirteen years, and I hear stuff comes here and nobody supports it and it leaves. And so, it gets real hard for like a community center unless the city pays for it, right? So, I don't know. I've thought about this. I wish I had a good answer. I love that the bowling alley's getting ready to open back up. I can't wait to do that. That looks really nice out there. I would love to see, you know, there's obviously the Y and things like that. I don't know.
The Y also has scholarships available.
Yeah.
For children who need financial support, and I'm not sure that that word gets out.
True.
But that's something to keep in mind, too, because they do have a lot of really good programs for children.
Harold, were there any, like, recommendations? Like, I, I don't know, my kids are older now, it's hard for me, like, besides like more play parks, which we've all talked about.
I, I wanna jump on that because they did lose Benton.
Yeah.
Northwest, Eastwood.
I kinda think that's what they're, they're, that there's no more playgrounds where they get to play.
I think that we should have pocket parks.
Yeah.
In each ward, at least.
Yeah.
We've got the property.
Yeah. Sure.
As part of the park's master plan.
Oh, well, there you go. There you go.
I hate to pick on you, but do y'all have anything scheduled for the rest of the year for kids to do?
I mean, we've got a couple, we're doing a couple movie nights out at the park.
We are gonna, we are scheduling a couple movies at the park type of thing. We had one that we were, we were gonna do this summer, but it just got flat out too hot, and we didn't think a lot of people would wanna sit out and try to watch a movie when it was a hundred and ten degrees outside. So, we're doing that. We invested in a, like a, a big inflatable screen and a projector, so we'll be able to do that on the ball field. Other than that, I mean, there's not, without an indoor facility, it's really hard to do stuff when the weather starts to get a little, obviously, if it's too hot, it's tough to do things outside, and then when it gets too cold, it's really tough to do things. So, a lot of the time, you know, you're dependent on indoor facilities such as YMCA or a community center when you have those indoor facilities.
So, putting, putting parks up in this, or place, places in, as part of the master plan for Parks and Rec?
I think there's, I think always there's the option to, if you've got the property to put them, you have to figure out, you know, how you're gonna do it. You know, a lot of the time, you wanna put parks up in different areas so you have enough coverage around the city so you don't have them all either in one location or, you know, not enough spaces like that. So, you know, I think that's always an option to look at.
Well, I think the city has the property, so I think we need to be pushing that one pretty hard for the community. Yeah. So, somehow, we can all get together and find properties and not just have it as a possibility on the master plan, but actually have it as a come to fruition on the master plan, yeah.
Put a suite set in your backyard?
There you go.
Splash pad? That's all I got.
Thank you, Preston. Just something about that, people's posted on what you come up with, and everybody up here, too.
Yeah.
I mean, that sounds like a good plan. Anybody got anything else?
Well, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the audio and video streaming that we need to still work on. I was talking to Amberie, and we'll talk afterwards and see, like, I don't know. It's gotta be, anyway, I'm gonna let it all go before I set something out there that don't need to be set out there. Were you gonna say something?
John's, but I don't hear nothin'.
Okay. And then, I know, this was probably last year when Dan and Amberie and I had met, and I don't know if it's ever happened, J D, this is more in your court, but we had talked about having